This is the Monday night of two thousand and twenty-five board meeting. Puck City School Board and Senator Board Meeting will start with the question.
I would like to be with you, the father of the United States of America, and to your beloved four British hands, one nation, one ground, universal, with liberty and justice for all.
Try not to. Heavenly Father, thank you for guiding us through another school year. We lift up our heartfelt gratitude for the retirees. May their years of service to students be richly blessed as they enter a new chapter. We celebrate our graduates and all they have accomplished, praying for continued wisdom on their journey ahead. As summer begins, we ask for rest, renewal, and safety for our students, staff, and families. In your name we pray.
Anna Roland, Nancy Pepperstein, Judy Truch, Robin Rennie.
Next on the agenda is the presentation and recognition of Coach Ian Rand and the Puck City Public School Esports Team.
And I bet that I sit on the front row. That's an astute observation from the board chair. Members of the head of board of education, I wanted to introduce our esports team in their very first inaugural season as Puck City Wildcats, under the direction of Ian Rand and our STEM Director Alicia Smith. The Puck City High School Esports Team is, like I said, in their first year. They play several video games competitively against other schools in Oklahoma. The Overwatch Team for the Wildcats ended this season in second place out of fifteen teams, and the Rocket League Team ended the season in fourth place out of thirteen teams. The top eight teams in each game went to the playoffs to determine which top four teams would travel to Bixby for state. The Overwatch Team placed third in those playoffs, and the Rocket League Team placed fourth in those playoffs. Both teams will be traveling to Bixby. When?
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow, and they're going to bring us a gold ball back for the Puck City Wildcats. This is the first year for the esports team, and I thought it was special to recognize these athletes who work very hard to compete with the other teams that have years of experience on top of what we've got. I want to introduce a few people from our Overwatch Team. Carson Lund, freshman. Are you just questioning here? No. Elizabeth Verdic. Jackson Wander, Robert Watkins, and Jackson Holliday. And the Rocket League Team consists of Captain Julian Aguilar and Connor Furtis. Can we give them a round of applause? Let's see if there are a few words for tomorrow's pep talk before the community.
Yeah, so this has been our first year, and we've tried really hard to compete with the other schools. I'm very grateful and proud of my athletes for doing so well. And we will try to have all of our names screened on our page now. And we'll get that out.
Good luck tomorrow Wildcats. Picture in the right order here. Hey. And you guys are welcome to stay anymore or?
You can lean up. We gotta get up around.
All right. Oh, yeah, we did want a picture of you guys. More in comparison. Will you guys come stand right up here and get a picture of you? Up here by the, oh, we shy, Sarah's community that wasn't supporting to be here for this.
Okay, next on the agenda is the presentation to the retiring Puck City Public School employees. And for that presentation, I'll turn it over to the superintendent and editor meeting.
Well, board members, we have a great crop of retirees at the school district. It's sad to let go, but sadly, everyone's at the end of their career. They should be recognized for all the contributions they make, not only to Puck City Public Schools, but sacrifices they make at home to provide for their families and provide for themselves. The first person I want to recognize is Ms. Tina Robbins. Tina is a compassionate and dedicated career professional whose unwavering commitment to her students has last, has made a lasting impact. With a nurturing spirit and a deep understanding of her students' needs, she creates a supportive and inclusive learning environment. Her patience and kindness fosters trust and encourages students to reach their full potential. Tina's dedication will be missed, but it did extend beyond the classroom. She consistently went above and beyond to ensure her students, her students felt valued and empowered. Her loving nature and steadfast support make her a valuable asset to the educational community. Sean Tegley-Tilla wishes Tina the best for retirement and all the other principles that she has served in our district. And I want to say thank you too, Tina. I appreciate you. Have a great retirement.
Thank you for letting me watch.
All right, the next one I'd like to recognize is Ms. Jody Fraser. All right, I know this story, so I'm going to share this story too. Jody has been a great colleague to work with for the last few years. Not, she, sorry, Jody is retiring from West Middle School. Not sure that she was apparently acclimbed. Not sure she knew what she was getting into with public education, but she's been a tremendous, in all capitals, help where needed person, willing to do whatever is asked for. Jody takes her assignments very serious, and there's going to be a story about that, and is very meticulous and organized. She's never shied away from a tough conversation with a parent about attendance. Speaking of not shying away from tough conversations, Ms. Fraser was, one of her duties was to supervise morning bus arrivals. There was an employee of the district who thought that they could just drop their son off on a busy day in the teacher's parking lot. Big mistake. Jody chased down his car and redirected him to the correct spot for parent draw box. Let me tell you, I was not happy. But that tells you just Ms. Fraser would buy the book and shame on Mr. Leeny for trying to sneak his kid into the back door.
He did not do it again.
He did not do it again. So, but at that time I was in operations, and I think the principals told her good luck after getting that leaky ceiling tile fixed to her office. We all have a good laugh. We, we do definitely appreciate Jody's help with our attendance measures up west and at east. And she's going to enjoy a great retirement, we just know. So, thank you, Ms. Fraser. That's a true story too. All right, our Transportation Director, Randy Enting. I have more people than I can count that send these stories on Randy, but I'm going to try to summarize here pretty quick because Randy does say paybacks are tough. I won't use how you said it. Here's one thing, Randy, first of all, Randy's our transportation director at Puck City Public Schools. This man is a miracle worker with the bus shortages, bus driver shortages of ensuring that our kids got to school and to every single activity that this board continues to say, let's do more, let's do more, let's do more. And Randy, that figures out how to make it happen, and I think that's partly why he's retired, but we're going to miss him for that. One thing about Randy, when I first came back forth to the district in 2021, I went to his office, and when I moved all the papers around off his desk so I could find where his desk was in his office, I could understand just how big of a job that Randy has. I love the way he leads with his drivers and his staff. They do have a way to get Randy to quit talking, and that is to say some really embarrassing stuff, so he turns red and leaves. And he worked in a predominantly strong-willed organization. That can happen sometimes. One of the drivers asked Randy, Randy used to be a police officer with the Puck City Police Department and New Kirk Police Department. That's when he had run is with my parents back in the New Kirk. Sorry, we've learned and we've grown, Randy. They're good people. They just need more help, so thank you for being there. One of the drivers asked Randy about the New Kirk cops all huddled in the sauna together, and that was a true story. And Randy said, no, you're thinking of the fire department. That was a good one. Randy's heart's always in the right place. In the wintertime, I can always count on Randy to give me a phone call about four thirty in the morning and tell me to get out there on the sidewalk through the road. But he did have the impossible task to decide if we were going to have school or not. The one time he did say we were going to have school and the bus slid into the ditch, that was more his decision, not my decision. I took the heat for it. I love Randy. But underneath, here's the thing, underneath all the long hours, weather reports, and radio calls, Randy cared. He knew that getting kids to school safely was the first step to helping them succeed. Randy took his job seriously. He led with a lot of professionalism, and our school district's better because of his service. Thank you, Randy. All right, Ms. Loretta Levitt. Loretta hugs all of the operations directors. Like that. That's why she has all these projects done linked in. If you're wondering if there is a relation there to our operations director, it is. Jason is her son, and Jason has some good stories about his mom that I don't want to tell. I think it would be better for him to tell about his mom. So, Jason, you want to tell a mom story?
Yeah.
Okay. Do you want to tell one right here?
Yeah. All right. One evening, Loretta came home, worked up, arms crossed, eyebrows raised, and muttered something about this one particular student just refuses to learn. She had tried numerous letters, colors, and even teaching the letter, but none of this worked. Then came the idea, forget the curriculum, just grab the game. So, the next day, Loretta marched in, did the lesson, planned a lesson, worked it, like it was the secret sauce of education. And wouldn't you know it, it worked. The students smiled, Loretta smiled, learning snuck in like a ninja wearing any of the cards. From that day on, Loretta remembered that she already knew deep down, connection comes first, and everything else follows. It was a prime moment to see the spark return in someone who's always had a giant heart for kids and apparently a hidden talent for educational gaming.
And if you missed that, Charlie Levitt, the granddaughter, stole the show there, so. Your daughter's giving you away. All right, next up, we have Mr. John Erickson. So, I appreciate Kevin and Stacy and Valerie sending some messages about John, but I would be personally remiss if I didn't say that. John was also my guardian when I was principal out at west, and I can always count on John coming by my office and telling me what's going on or connecting with what we needed at the school. But I, I really personally appreciate working with John, and I know the west admin too. But Stacy said here, John always had a smile on his face and took pride in his work. John was a team player through and through. He never minded lending a hand to his colleagues if they needed help. He cared about the staff at west, and he also cared about our students. We will miss him, is what Stacy said, but I will also personally miss John because every holiday or a bit, John will always text Happy Fourth of July, or Happy Father's Day, or Merry Christmas. And John is a great people person and a great ambassador of Puck City Public Schools. Thank you, John. And Dorota? She, did you make it tonight? And then Ralph Cassidy, did he make it? Did I miss all, all the retirees? Did I miss them? My notes are out of order. Sweet, okay. Well, thank you retirees. I wish you well, and after sixteen or ninety day cooling period, you're going to reply to the district and we'll rehire you.
I'll ask all the retirees to get out in the hallway.
Thank you guys so much.
Thank you.
Next will be the presentation of the Employee of the Month and the Friends of Education Award. The first award is the Certified Employee of the Month with Perla Leitas.
All right, so Perla came in, she's a first-year teacher, and she came right in, and she didn't just have one class. She had Spanish one, two, three, and four as a brand-new teacher, and we really needed her. And she stepped right up to the plate with grace and with kindness. It's really hard to be a first-year teacher, and so to have all of those preps, not just one, like most secondary teachers do, that just added a whole nother layer to the difficulties in the first year of teaching. We appreciate her so much for allowing us to continue offering such rigorous and advanced options for our students, and so we're so thankful for you.
Next, we'll have the fourth Employee of the Month, Lacy Epperson, who's the Child Nutrition Secretary.
This is a great honor. Lacy is new. So, we have two new ones. I won Employee of the Month in nineteen ninety-two, and it's been downhill ever since. All right, we are excited to recognize Ms. Lacy Epperson as the May Support Employee of the Month. Lacy is based at the district Child Nutrition Office, but spends a lot of time all over the, at different sites around the Puck City School District. Lacy brings a positive attitude and outstanding work ethic to the child nutrition program. She is always willing to fill in at any sites, and that happens a whole lot, that are needing assistance for the day. Lacy is a team player, capital T-E-A-M. Whether it is in supporting the sites, training staff, submitting state and federal claims and reports, communicating with parents, and managing the CMP social media site, Lacy is self-motivated, who takes great pride in her job. Lacy is a true meaning of being a Wildcat, and thank you very much for all you do.
And finally, we have the Friend of Education, Mr. Joe DeNoya from Siouxville Chevrolet and GMC.
Joe, you're not here to sell us cars?
I thought you were selling us something.
So, Joe DeNoya and Siouxville Chevrolet have been exceptional partners to Puck City High School through the Partners in Education or PI program. And they always demonstrate their commitment to the success of both students and teachers. One of the most valuable aspects of their partnership is that we can always rely on Joe for anything we need to support our school community. Whether it's assisting with resources, providing sponsorship for events, or simply lending a helping hand when challenges arise, Joe and Siouxville Chevrolet are there for us. Their willingness to support our educational needs has made them a true friend in education, playing a key role in helping to create a positive and thriving environment for learning at Puck City High School. Thank you so much.
And as the three recipients of the awards will step out in the hallway, you'll get your picture taken. And in fact, we'll be in the Puck City paper. Joe may sell a car out of. Next, we'll have the public comment. Do we have any? Next on the report is the superintendent's report with the legislature board discussion. Adam Leing will tell us about Lincoln's family book day, ECTD's district book day, and Free K Child Development Center, and the other book day.
Excellent. Thank you, Chair. Thank you, members of the head of board of education, members of the public. It's a pleasure to be here to give you an update on the things that are happening at twenty-third and Lincoln's as it relates to public schools. I don't want to go into all the weeds and all the other aspects of different policy. We are still in session right now. We've got a few still on the watch list. Last week was a deadline week at Capitol, so lots of floorwork. There are still some maneuvers that the legislature could do to get bills across the finish line, but it's really, that's rare and usually for some very specific last minute things. I think if you've been reading or following the paper, there's some issues with Department of Mental Health, Department of Corrections that our elected officials are packing right now. But as far as it relates to schools and public schools, there's a few that are still out there. Senate Bill six fifty-two was an election bill. Remember, there was a couple of different election bills specifically targeting school board elections. This one targets all elections that, I think all school officials I've gotten on board with that would adjust all elections to five per year. So, instead of right now, we have a process where there are multiple six, seven, and eight elections per year that could be by law. On days that you could hold an election, this would move that down to five. That one is back over, I think it's back over in the Senate side after the House made a few adjustments. Senate Bill six, that one was the one that targeted that all school board elections had to be in November. And it would make two seats up one year, three seats up the next year. So, it would just kind of, or a five-seat board. There was, there was other provisions for a seven-seat board or other sized boards, three-seat board. So, it would, I, I just kind of died over there, but that was sponsored by the Siouxville and Bixby School District. House Bill seventeen twenty-seven is expanded a lot for teachers' childrens. That is the Oklahoma Promise. So, if you were a teacher in public schools that has taught for ten years, then your child would qualify for Oklahoma's Promise, which I think would be a great recruitment tool for teachers. They specifically say not for superintendents. Shame on them, but you know. But there is provision if your wife's a teacher, which doesn't work for me, but that if your wife's a teacher, that they would let that happen. But I hope it works for the superintendent. I don't think it will. House Bill twenty-two eighty-eight removes your retire and rehire restrictions. This one got laid over, so it's possibly dead at this point. That would lift the ninety-day cap from retiring to rehiring, and how much earnings you could earn making your first three years of retirement to sixty days with unlimited retirement, but it's essentially dead, which is kind of surprising because that was sponsored by the Speaker of the House. So, probably an interesting deal when the Speaker's bill doesn't make it across the finish line. They'll leave it to the governor, but we'll see. It's possibly dead. There, like I said, there could be a maneuver. The speaker could pull if he wanted to, but I think you would have the exclusive political power and a multiple seat. These ones I did send to the governor. Now, remember, the governor has to either veto them, but if he takes no action, then maybe come law. So, Senate Bill three sixty-four prohibits corporal punishment on any student with a disability. That doesn't, not a problem in Puck City, so we don't have to adjust practices here, and that would be awful. I'm not going there. House Bill twenty-fourty-seven requires schools to contact emergency services and a child's parent as soon as possible after FNF is administered. So, I think there was some questions on the school side. Can we do that? And do we call and ask for permission before we inject the child that's having a severe allergy attack? But this really removes any cloudiness from that and says, schools, go for it. Then you call the adult and call the parents as soon as possible. So, House Bill thirteen ninety-three, this is a little confusing, but it, it is. There's a story behind this one. Requires board education to adopt separate consent forms for districts to use to obtain parent consent that a student with an IADEA disability will participate in OAD and receive instruction based on alternate standard. Right now, that had been the IEP team's decision on what they thought was best, which was comprised of parents, teachers, counselors, service providers, administrators. But this would move all of that and give it to the parents to decide what they want. So, if a parent said, no, my kid deserves to be in a regular class, receiving regular services, we would probably have to figure out how to comply more with that law, or learn more about this at Co-S. Am I saying that one right, Amy?
Right.
So, this one, there's, I think, kind of came about in the Tulsa area. Some parents did not want their kids removed from the general education classroom environments, and IEP team developed differently, thought that it would be best interest for the kids. And the parents, I think, said no, and now there's law that says that the parents are going to be the final authority. So, I think there's going to be some ripple effects that will have impacts on a lot of general ed classrooms if there are kids that are disrupted to the point that other kids are losing out on education opportunities. Or we'll just have to figure out to navigate that as best as we can with our community and our patrons. Maybe being our elected official's prize on unintended consequences of legislation that maybe goes a little far reaching, but you know, I think that intent was more parent rights, but I think that we might have missed the watermark on, let's ask for all students. I don't know. We'll see how this one plays out as we navigate that one. You're going to hear a lot about Senate Bill one thirty-nine if you haven't already, but this one, yes, sir.
Part of those three that have been sent to the governor, but then the five-day holding period.
Yeah.
And you veto them.
Yeah, he's going to either take action to veto them, or they're going to be approved. Yeah, I think it's probably, it might be seven, I think it's five, I don't know. Yeah, it's basically you can do something with it, sign with the law, or take no action, then it become law. But there's something with signing die and, and the four-sided die, which is the last of legislatures in session. But I have a feeling those ones are all going to go, go across. So, there are about three hundred bills for education laws online, and you go three hundred. These are more of the hot ones that I think are, you guys are going to hear about because I'm going to come to you and say, we've got some issues in your schools that we're going to have to talk about how we can best administer this. Senate Bill one thirty-nine is going to be the big one, that we have to ban cell phones starting next year from eight AM to three thirty PM. That means they cannot be out during periods at lunch unless there's an emergency or a health concern, like I'm diabetic and my app monitored, I'm low sugar. But we, as a board, we have a cell phone policy, but we have to put more teeth in it that says absolutely not. Now, you can have for instructional purposes, so if a teacher says, we're going to do a game where you, or a response tool, you will respond to a software and the games just come up or something like that you need to come for. But at lunchtime and assemblies, no cell phones. So, that's going to be fun, how we enforce that as administrators. So, we're going to have to probably do a lot of informing the public, educating kids. One thing that schools can't do is we cannot take and keep a cell phone. So, if we take a phone for violation of the cell phone policy, we have to return that phone by the end of the day. And we can't keep the phone overnight. That could technically be writ in lawsuit on our part because cell phones are now about a thousand dollars a pop. So, so if, whatever we do, it may be, you know, get a warning, you know, push the phone up, don't have it out. But if it's repeated, we might have to call see the phone, release it to the parents. But at the end of the day, we'll just have to give it back to the kids. I don't know how we keep the phones. And we don't have the liability of keeping a thousand-dollar device and making certain that it's not broken or damaged in our care. So, that'll be fun as administrators to do. Senate Bill seven fifty-eight, this will prohibit school districts from having virtual days that fulfill classroom instruction time. This does not apply next school year, so if we have input of weather and we feel like a virtual day is the best thing for our school district, we can still do it for one more year. But if you have a virtual day moving forward in twenty-six, twenty-seven, it has to be for a state of national emergency. The governor or the president declares a national emergency, or the state board of education approves it, and the district submits a plan on how all your kids were fed that day, how your special ed kids were taught that day. And it's a lot of thresholds that I don't think a lot of school districts will be able to meet. So, in essence, all virtual days will end after next school year.
So, who wants to come for like an ACT?
Yeah, so currently, like, next year, we had talked about when we're hosting the state student council convention, and we have the three thousand high school kids on our campus that Monday. We can't do that and have our fifteen hundred kids. Should that be a virtual day for our high schoolers on that day? That would be a good fit for that, or, you know, like I said, ACT, having virtual days for all the other kids and juniors coming in. That's something that happened next. I mean, we can go for one more year, but year after that, we'll need to pivot. So, we'll, we'll probably figure out what we can do for the upcoming school year, but that one, I appreciate a little bit of lead time to figure that out instead of August, and moving that way. House Bill fourteen eighty-five, I put that one in there for Jennifer. This allows teachers with emergency or provisional certificates to teach more than four semesters. And then I put down there as an OTU also board. I think for the board and the community, that. I think for the board and the community, that you are probably, will hear a lot about the cell phone issue. But at the end of the day, it's a state law. We have to follow the state law. So what we're going to do, our best to follow that. The cell phone bill, I want to make sure you guys know, we have, it's mandatory, you have to do it for one year. Legislature says you have to have a strong cell phone ban, ban that'll develop one year. Then if you change it from that, I have to present whatever our policy is to you every year for a trickle after that. So I think the thought there was, let's see how it works. And there's a big pushback.
I don't think they've considered student mental health, but that's, I'm just saying, I mean, bring it up.
It's going to be fun. So those are a few of the ones that I talked this board with, people most interested in hearing about. So we'll move into, any questions on legislative update? All right. District update, graduating 305 high school students on Friday nights. Judy, how many were in your class?
Uh, I'm 35.
I'm 35. How many were in your class?
Four, 40.
Nancy, how many graduates, seniors were in your class?
Oh, I'm sorry. I was talking, I kicked on. I apologize. You know.
Was it the whores?
Possibly, yeah, possibly.
Was yours in the whores?
I was 99. I don't want to.
Judy remembers.
My memory is.
Mine was 94 and it was about 440, 457. Yours was 94.
Okay, mine was 423.
Well, they say some 80% of all statistics are made up on the spot. But new this year.
Aren't you the superintendent? Shouldn't you have data on this?
Well, I do, but I didn't have it for this. But I was using your information to illustrate my next point. So that was, that was a good deal. New this year seating will be at first come, first served. And we have never ran out of seats at Solon Stadium.
How many did, was it enrollment?
How many were in your class?
15.
So.
There wasn't any in the school.
You're generally talking because the other side's open, right?
What's that?
You're talking because the other side's open.
We did sit on the other side.
I know, but I'm saying.
I haven't even seen our stadium in the last three years, four years, but we'll.
Because, do you see all the people, I'm just saying, all the people on the side that.
Yeah, but they will sit up in the rooters.
So you think that would fill the situation?
Yeah, I'm confident they will. And if not, we have that, we do have ADA seating on the track from gate to gate on both ends. So I will count the number of chairs that are down there. But when I was in operations, I want to say it was over 100, maybe closer to 150 chairs on the track. So we will have plenty of capacity for all. I didn't, we, we changed this for a number of reasons. One, last year and something years prior, our high school administration and unfortunately, our local Palm City police were having to mediate disputes between, did someone move my part? Did someone zit in at my spot? So we just thought it was taking away from the commencement. So we want to refocus on the kids. We are opening the gates at 6:00. The commencement starts at 8:00. And I learned today that we have a 5% chance of rain, so I'm going to call that little to no chance of rain. So we should be able to get everyone in there and hopefully it's a great event. However, we did recapture every event from prom to first aid school. And if it's a train wreck, we'll change it up. But in our research of several 6A schools, we kind of got laughed at when we said, will you guys be reserved seating or safe seats? And they said, no, it's a trick. I think our community and we would encourage dissuade you from considering it. So and that's just going on. Now, what other communities do is not what we have to necessarily do. But I just, there is, there's, the word's not precedent, but there is a trend that, that seems to be.
Of 10 to 15 years. I tried to talk Adam into finding a way to placate people, to find like an interim step between doing the way completely.
We're going to try and, we're going to try. Yeah. So and I hope, I hope it works out. And if it doesn't work out, I will call it nothing where my say. I'm sure, I think it'll probably be fine.
Yeah, this is all for seniors, so everybody is specialized. Even those Solon parents are spending.
Well, you say that, but you can have people that, you know, that underclassmen, they want to come and do stuff like that. So it's not, you just.
I get that, but your majority is senior parents who will have to.
Everyone's got a seat. Now, yours is, it's back to your kids' head, but we want professional photographers there. And we'll have video board that, that, that capture the events when we're here. But you can see more across the age. There's, I've sat everywhere in Solon, but I don't think there's a bad seat in that, that the stadium, on the home side.
And you're short everywhere.
Well, that's why I got you a seat on the stage. But I do know that's tough on the community and changes stuff. But I want to, we, we have a responsibility to make this about the kids and we don't need the distractions of disputes and issues about reservations. So we'll see how this works. Data reviews, our team right now is in, I talked about this last month. We have two more data reviews for this district. And I'm really proud of our principals. I, I don't know who I'm more proud of, our directors, our principals, because we are taking a lot of time at the end of the year with all the awards assemblies and all of the great celebrations we have going on across our district that we are stopping and looking at how our kids are progressing, how our teachers are progressing. And, you know, already seeing results. Because we, I feel like our district does a great job of saying, here's the tools, go do it, prosper. But if we're not seeing improvement, then we need to stop and strip that away and figure out different ways to do that. The discussion has been powerful. Like I did in the follow-up data reviews, we will summarize this and synthesize this as a district admin team and get that out to our principals and to the board. So I do think there's some themes that I've already seen coming up at our secondary and elementary sites that I think have some profound impacts. If we can focus on those areas, we can see some real growth, a real opportunity for growth. So anyways, that's the intent on it. And I, people have really had some really good conversation as a result of that. Staffing this summer, I've talked a little bit to some individuals in the district. And I pulled this to Jennifer, this is just my early prediction, guys. Last few years, we've hired 60-plus new employees. I would be surprised if we hit over 40 this year. Our retirement class was the lowest it's been in years. And I don't know what that speaks to, whether that's just great leadership at the top and everyone wants to stay here or economic conditions or that they're really confident in the board's direction. I don't know. It could be anything. But I think we're just, it could be a combination of all those factors and the community's feeling. I don't know. We could see a lot of cool stuff happening. But I do think that this is going to be one of the smallest recruitment classes we've seen in a long time in our school district. So if you come up in August and I say, well, we had 30 new employees this year, I think that's more of assigned to a lot of different factors, so positive factors, not negative.
So just everyone on wood, what are the main positions that are open?
Main positions that are open right now. Well, obviously, at our level, we had our operations director quit. No, he resigned. Jason Lovett is taking a position with Broken Arrow Public Schools. I think a very, great opportunity there for him and his family. So that would be probably one of the bigger jobs that we've got to field with the district because that position's responsible for about one and a half million square feet of property and transportation, child nutrition and maintenance. So we don't have any admin openings at this time. Principal opening is not on wood. So right now, we just have a few teacher openings. We had a great interview today for strength and conditioning, I was told. And I'll be honest with you, I'm really excited about the applicants, the quality of applicants that are visiting themselves for our teaching jobs. You know, we, the last few years, had to bring you a lot of adjunct individuals to help build critical roles for us. But we're seeing more credentialed individuals with some experience presenting themselves as possible applicants for future jobs. So right now, that's kind of about it, Amy. I think we're in a good position as a school district as far as the hiring front goes. Big law changes coming for this school district. I talked the cell phone bill already, but the next thing that you guys are going to get in our work between now and our June board meeting is where are we going with graduation requirements? You have to take action in the June board meeting on pathways and graduation requirements. And the high school admin and Dr. Hawkins and now Ms. Kusick are going to be working. They have been working on this in the background. And that doesn't just come from just their work, but we've had to have community partnerships and buy-ins with local education partners, businesses. So we can help prepare these eighth graders when they start in August, help to be ready to graduate when they're seniors in six years or five years, sorry. So that's going to be big. But then exciting things that are happening in our district. First ever STEM camps. That was a part of our Philip 66 grant money. I told our STEM director, get one good chance for a first impression, positive first impression. So we want to make sure these STEM camps bring a lot of value to our community. Parents, kids that are experiencing science and rockets and fire and explosions in a safe, controlled way. But they're also in an innovative way too. So I would really like to see rockets shot off over broke, but we'll see how that works. Driver's education, like I said, last year at this time, we didn't have driver's education program. We rebooted that, trying to get that up and going. Had a few law changes that might hinder that, but we're going to navigate that this summer and get that program going. And that actually starts next week. So we. We, yeah, yep, we graduated kids and now we're going to go in cars and teach them how to drive. So. You want that? Good, all right. Yes, why is going on across, will be happening this summer, which is extended school year? And then we just have a number of professional development opportunities. Our team takes advantage of, our teachers take advantage of. So lots of good stuff happening in the district here. Pre-K update, I put this on the agenda because I wanted the community to hear and if people wanted to have a chance to speak in the public about this move or change, that they had an avenue to do that. But boxes have arrived for teachers. I was told today, one teacher had 68 boxes and that's just stuff in the closets. So teachers are good at storing material in curriculum. So we'll have those ready to go and be moved back to their home sites in next month, early June. We are anticipating telling teachers, informing teachers of their site assignments. We have one more just follow-up meeting to ensure we check every box and cross every T and dot every I. But we want to get that, let them know before school's out so that if they want to go check out their room on teacher checkout day, they have an avenue to do that. And exciting news, I think this is the community responding to this move, guys. Already 100 kids signed up for pre-K next year. And if you're wondering, how does that compare? We have 189 pre-kers this year.
How we did last year.
189. Oh, at this time, uh, it was less than 100, way less than 100.
Probably around, around 80.
So around 80. And one, I put this on there, we may have to hire an additional teacher if we get those numbers. If we get up to 200, we're going to need an additional teacher. So, which is a happy problem. That's a good problem. That's exactly what I think this board and our community wanted to wait and see.
How come Jennifer wouldn't smile when you sit there?
Because those are hard positions to fill, almost as hard as bus drivers. Who cannot adjunct or emergency early childhood.
We can't urgency. There's no adjunct.
No adjunct, I'm sorry, thank you. And one thing I want to tell the community and this board is our principals have responded to the call. There will not be early dismissal for pre-K next year. The pre-K kids will dismiss at the same time as every other kid in our school district. So one, I think that gives kids more opportunities for educational outcomes. But also, parents aren't having to figure out, I have to pick up my pre-ker at 2:20 or 2:30 and I have to pick up my other kids at 3:10, 3:20. So sometimes parents are missing hour work to do that.
It's been also about, got us in trouble with the 10:80 hours last year on the pre-K.
Yeah.
They were almost, would have stayed for school.
So we've talked to every principal and we've got plans of how we can do that and fit that time in for pre-kers and teachers that have planned periods. So the other thing that we're still investigating, and we had a lively discussion this morning, is can you transport four-year-olds and do we want to transport four-year-olds? It's kind of scary on one end because, believe it or not, there are four-year-olds at the beginning of school that don't know their name or address or what their parents' names are. And that makes me a lot harder than if we pick up the kid, not picking up, but dropping the kid off. Do they know, do ones have their right address and is there someone at home with them or something like that? So we're still talking about that. Another thing on transportation that we have to think about is right now cat care is our after-school childcare that we provide to the school district separate from the CDC. Because that's for, for, that's for. But if we have low numbers, like in Garfield right now, we bus those kids over to Roosevelt to the cat care. So parents still have an avenue for actual childcare. So we are checking laws to make sure, can I put pre-K kids on that bus, have a low childcare site to get them to a cat care site? And still check all those boxes. So make sure we're on, up and up there with laws and policy. But our goal is how do we, one, get these kids back, increase our enrollment, but then also how do we provide better service for our parents and community? So I think it'll be, we'll work this stuff out as administrators and hopefully have a good plan for this board. Any questions about the pre-K update? Great. CDC letter of intent, not much has changed. In fact, really nothing of substance outside of a few typos on my end. But 20% discount for Palm City Public Schools employees for monthly childcare. We did add that they need to be at least a minimum of 50% employee of this school district, and they can't qualify for any other subsidy. So we have some employees that qualify for subsidy and if they get a discount, it cuts into the bottom line of the childcare center, the way I understand it. They, you're, that's more of the CDC business on that end. But they cover the maintenance and operation costs for the Washington Pre-K Center. There's still 36-month termination clause that I think is going to be kind of a sticking point. And then we must have approval from PCPS before any significant changes to the building. I think it says superintendent or the superintendent says to me on that. You have a copy of it in your packet, so you have the verbatim. This is more of a summarized one. But they will operate at a minimum from 7:00 a.m. to 4:30. But we put in there that we would like within one year of operations to have a plan for the business community to serve families until 5:15. And we have said yes to all of that to this point. So if the board's okay with that, and we'll take feedback either tonight or whenever. But the next step would be to draft a contract with an attorney and then present that to the board to review and vote on. Now, I put on here, the goal for this is August. But really, the district, if we don't make August, it's not an imperative thing for the school district. So we're trying to move with some urgency because I think it would be good for them to get over there and move at that speed. But all I'm really concerned about getting our pre-kers to their own sites and presenting a good plan. So I would rather take my time and not rush through something that would cause issues. But at this point, that's where we're at with the letter of intent. Any questions?
The, the list that you just gave on that on the letter of intent was pretty much kind of changed from a couple of weeks ago. So I, have you discussions happened since then?
Yeah, yeah, just if there was any chance to move on the 36 months.
And all you've got discussed.
The 36 months and the maintenance to say that the superintendent would be the one to have to, or has to be, to make any significant changes to the facility. But I'm happy to take any more feedback too. All right, thank you.
Next is the consent agenda. If we include the minutes from the April 14th curriculum board meeting and contracts agreement under 10,000. Let's vote initially on number one, the minutes from the April 14th, 2025, April 14th meeting. Because I believe we will probably have a change or two in the contract under $10,000. So with that, I would ask for a motion for item number one.
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Joe, do you have a second? Second from Judy. Comments, questions? Call for the vote.
Judy Trup. Robin Riley. Nancy Zimmerstein. Joe Vaden. Hannah Rowland.
Item two is the contracts under 10,000. The property committee discussed every one of them. A couple that will probably need to have a separate motion and discussion about. Number five on your packet is probably going to be okay. Number three, I do have a question on it. Jason, are those coaches' numbers right? Because it doesn't seem right that there's 10 coaches at West Junior High. And on, well, we can talk about that later. And on, well, we can talk about that later. Six is tree removal, seven's okay, eight is a state requirement, we don't have any choice in that matter. Nine, ten, okay, okay, eleven, okay. Twelve, a discussion was held on it and it was, it looks like a big increase, but it's really a prorated term and it also includes summer school this time. Thirteen, fourteen, fifteen is okay. Sixteen, I want to bring everybody's attention that New Kirk football will be held at Sullivan Stadium this year, and I do have the contract for it, and I think Joe Turner negotiated it, it doesn't appear to be any problems with it.
Does it does no cost to the district?
Right. I think cleaning is the only thing, that we do have a cleaning on it. I think that probably is no cost to the district, incorrect. There is a janitorial fee that they'll have to pay, similar to
The New Kirk's going to pay?
Yeah, New Kirk's going to pay.
That's what I was thinking.
Okay, you're right.
And our administration usually probably runs concession stands, so this may help our kids.
And we do have a concession, and I guess Joe or you or somebody just talked the input, and the input's going to run the concession stand.
Right, the school's got to vote.
Do I?
The school's got to vote.
Yeah. It was either Joe or somebody. We had a long discussion upon number seventeen about the Nike sports, and there is not a buyout clause, we're in the fourth year of a five-year contract, so we really don't have any choice but to continue on with it. And we do get a fairly significant kickback or a refund from them.
I'm saying we have a kickback.
It's the same thing. It's a refund from them. Eighteen, nineteen, twenty is okay. Twenty-one, twenty-two, I would ask that we table twenty-three. Twenty-four and twenty-five, so twenty. We'll talk about the tabling, the reason I wanted to say.
I want to see another point.
Order real quick. What are, where are we going, over the consent agenda right now, one by one, and then deciding if we want to pull out? I just want to make sure I know where I'm at.
Yes, yes. At this point, it's going to be a motion for everything except three and twenty-three.
Unless there's something else, if someone else wants to go out there.
And now, everybody on the board has the option, bro, that's just the ones I want to pull out.
I just, I have a question, a point in order, did you not build this agenda with items? Yeah, so why are we not, nevermind.
Okay.
I guess the question is, we had a committee meeting and it went through, so we're concerned now, that's what you have to do.
About the two.
Okay, I thought we were good on these two. What was the change?
At the time, we had the committee meeting, we were, since then, things have changed. Twenty-four, twenty-five, we're good. Twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight's good, and then one rescinded. So I would ask any board member if there's anything they would, they would like to have a separate motion on it.
I'll just go ahead and make the motion to remove item twenty-three, probably the consent agenda, the vote on separately.
Okay, let's vote. And I would ask that we also vote on number three separately. So the motion would be
All, and then my motion is remove three and twenty-three.
Okay. And I, the second to those?
Second, one second.
Okay, and we'll discuss those three. So the motion would be to remove, the motion would be to approve all except three and twenty-three, pending a further discussion of those.
Right.
Any comments or questions?
Can I make sure I'm clear on what the motion is? Motion is to remove
To remove item, item three?
Not to vote on the other, but to remove
Yeah, we have to make the motion and second and vote on that motion to remove those two items from the agenda. And then make a motion after that.
It's removed to separate vote, it's removed to separate vote, not removed completely.
Yes, yes, sorry. So I'm making the motion to remove item three and twenty-three as to pull them out as a separate item.
So then the motion would be to approve everything except three and twenty-three.
Well, we have to make, I think we have a little permission to reverse, but I don't know.
Yeah, technically, you can vote for approving those two.
Okay, we do that. Comments, questions? Well, we'll talk about those.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Okay, call for the vote.
Nancy Zimmerstein. Joe Baden. Hannah Rowland. Judy Truitt. Robin Riley.
Okay, now I would look for a motion to approve all except three and twenty-three.
I would vote to, to vote on one through, what is, one through
Twenty.
Twenty-two, twenty-four, twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight. Except
Excluding, excluding three and twenty-three.
Got you.
Well, we have a separate cost for it.
Do you have a second?
Yes.
Okay, call for the vote.
Nancy Zimmerstein. Hannah Rowland. Joe Baden. Judy Truitt. Robin Riley.
Motion carried. Okay, now let's talk about three to start with. And the question I had on three, Jason, are those numbers correct? I don't believe it, I question you on those.
Well, the thing with that is, it can be fluid, just based on where basketball may practice, who's consistently there all the time. That's saying a minimum of two. So what, what that does is give the ability to cover our coaches that are at that site along with athletes if ARI-VAC is ever called in for student safety of our student athlete. So the service is a very good one for our community, as we all know that the ARI-VAC is a very costly service.
Well, I'm not questioning the head of EVAC, because it is a good deal. What I'm questioning is, if coach number three, do we have to spell out the coaches?
No, we just, we just list it up to number.
Well, we have more than two coaches at East Junior High School.
But again, there's a lot of fluidity to that. I mean, variations in seasons, where are they at? It's not always that wrestling may be at that site with our girls program, or basketball program may be at a different site, sometimes.
Wrestling's going to have two, a head coach and assistant for girls and a head coach and assistant for boys.
No, it's only girls and these. And all that we have on staff right now is a head and assistant.
Don't we have junior high boys wrestling?
No, junior high boys wrestling is at the high school, with our, our high school boys team.
So seven, eight grade has no wrestling for boys?
Yes, they do, they're at the high school with our boys team.
The girls are at what? Or, sorry.
Is this, is this cost like per event that's currently happening? Is that what it is?
It's, it's throughout the whole school year.
But I'm saying, like, if you have a game at location A, then the service covers up to
Yes, even, even on the road.
For that event. So you're talking like, so then you have to cost the three hundred and seventy-one dollars to cover that one particular sporting event.
Right.
And if you have an event here, an event here, and an event here, the same day, then it's three seventy-one times each one of those students on that day. Is that what you're talking about?
No, this, this cost is the annual cost to do that. So in full, this whole package is two thousand two hundred and sixty-eight dollars. This is, this covers the full year. So.
So we have forty-eight coaches at the high school, total?
Yeah, I would say.
Hundred and seventeen athletes doesn't seem like enough.
We do have a lot of kids that are multi-sport athletes.
Are we sitting there just on them or doing?
Well, I just want to make sure that they don't stick us on the hundred and eighteenth athlete or the fiftieth coach.
I understand, I understand what.
Like if we submitted enrollment, that then we would have to have more students to pay for, or is it?
Do we have to, do we have to list each student?
No, 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 we don't, because if they're members of our program, they're going to be covered.
Then why do we even list the number of coaches and athletes?
Because to get the service, we can't list zero, we have to give them a number on what could possibly be covered, be covered in this.
I just want to make sure that any time a coach or an athlete gets hurt, either home or away, they're covered.
Oh, yeah, and, and we ran this, knock on wood, we ran this for the last seven years and we've been fortunate enough to not have to use this service, but it's there if we need it.
And you said make a motion for it, since it's separate, or are you a senior?
Let's vote, let's vote it separately.
Okay, well, I'm going to make a motion.
Okay. To
To
Approve it?
To approve it, yeah.
Okay. Got a motion to approve it in a second. Comments, questions? Call for the vote.
Robin Riley. Judy Truitt. Hannah Rowland. Nancy Zimmerstein. Joe Baden.
Twenty-three. Nancy, to answer your question?
Yes, sir.
Was it the superintendent's recommendation that we pull it or take it?
Well, my question was, yeah, I just want to remember, just to discuss it again, before we're in this, yes.
Well.
Yeah, let's just, we were waiting on, in property, we were going to get another quote, we called a couple of times to get quotes.
In documentation.
And, and documentation, managed the quote, and it has not materialized. So if we need to, if we don't, if that doesn't materialize at a proper wait time, I think maybe longer than a week is, is probably appropriate to get a quote for another crane in town, but if we need to have a special board, we need to approve crane service to get those new ATRAC units on the commons, then we'll need to just get that done, so.
Would tabling those hinder any, who's answering?
No, we're, we're, we have a lead time still on the rooftop units for po-high commons, so we, I mean, the, the project can get done, we can schedule the summer, whether that's in the June or July, so we're fine.
So I, with that, I was recommending that we table it.
Are you making a question?
Go ahead.
Well, I would make a motion to vote on, first, to table on item twenty-three on the consent agenda.
Okay, comments, questions?
We'll have that second.
Go ahead, Nancy, and Joe. Call for the vote there.
Nancy Zimmerstein. Joe Baden. Judy Truitt. Robin Riley. Hannah Rowland.
You're gone.
My mom's upset.
What are you going to do?
No, I'm going to say Judy to
We're just going to get word to send the lead, so.
Okay, next is consider and take action on the following district financial reports that will be paid through N.
Okay, I'll get my card down.
And we talked about those in the finance meeting. Do I have a motion?
I'll motion, Robin.
To approve, ain't prevent?
Yes, sir.
Okay, second?
One second, huh?
Motion made and seconded. Comments, questions?
I'll just look to the little person.
Okay. Take your time. Call for the vote.
Hannah Rowland. Joe Baden. Nancy Zimmerstein. Robin Riley.
Motion. Did you give it? No?
But then she left. Meeting.
I don't know how we do that.
No, you don't, you don't.
He just put it in the heads.
Yeah, I just put in the minutes last night.
It's just, the vote's just for, for another. It's like, it's as if she didn't.
Okay. Number two, vote to approve or disapprove the resolution for school libraries universal service E-rate, that's the rate that started about ninety percent and is down to practically nothing, but it's federal laws and we just Okay, this, I think all of these are going to be approved, so let me, let me run through them all, okay?
Okay.
Okay, number three, consider and take action on application for participation in the twenty, twenty-five summer food and service program for children. Four, consider and take action on the following contracts and agreements. A, a quote from Discovery Education for Dream Box Reading plus side license for the high school, and I think it was thirteen thousand. B, quote from Game Time for most of the district playgrounds, seventeen thousand. C, quote from Holders Fencing, thirteen thousand. D, agreement with Jenkins and Kemper, provide annual audit report, another thirteen thousand seven fifty. Ratification of agreement with Kyra Construction for the twenty twenty-one bond projects. F, agreement with Power School Group for Student Information System. H, quote from Power School Group LLC for my power hub and engaged suite. I, ratification of agreement with Rick Scott Construction, this is similar to the one with Kyra Construction for the bond issued, that have already been approved, that they would do any work, follow-up work, or any work, etc., people would need on it. Agreement with Tuji and for the use of accounting software systems. J, K, agreement with Taylor Therapy, provided license, physical therapist, for physical therapy service for students enrolled in PCF. L, ratification of agreement with Winter Road Town, oh, that's their bond projects center, Kyra and the other construction manager. So do I have an approval or a motion to approve items one and two? Two is items A through Hi. Or, yeah.
Two, three, and four, Angel.
M for twenty-five, twenty-six.
L. L.
M is the one we've talked about.
That's the one you pulled. That's what you talked about, Winter Road Town, or you're talking about L.
L is the one that we talked about. M, I would ask for a separate vote on it.
We pulled it, there's no, there's, it's just a L on ours.
Okay, good. Because M was pulled, the one I was looking at. Okay, do I have a motion?
Yeah, are you asking for a motion to vote on items two and three and then four, including all of the subset parts of four? Just wanted to make sure.
That's what he's working for, asking for a motion for, we can vote if we want to pull it.
No, 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 I just wanted to make sure that
Well, I'll make a motion, please.
Second?
Oh, sure.
Hannah. Comments? Call for the vote.
Nancy Zimmerstein. Hannah Rowland. Joe Baden. Robin Riley.
Hi. We need an executive session? Anybody dig one? Okay. Number ten, consider and take action on recommendations for termination, reassignment, separation of personnel, and attached B-tips personnel reports. So I have a motion to approve personnel reports.
I have a motion to approve item ten.
Second?
All second.
Comments, questions? Call for the vote.
Joe Baden. Hannah Rowland. Nancy Zimmerstein. Robin Riley.
Aye.
Uh, do we have any new business? Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second?
I'll, I'll, please, sir.
Call for the vote.
Anna Rollin.
Aye.
Joe Baden.
Aye.
Nancy Zimmerstein.
Aye.
Robin Riley.
Aye.